I call the September 12, 2023 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Casada has been excused this evening. To start with, I would like to ask Chief Perez to come to the front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I had the opportunity to attend the Fallen Heroes Ceremony on the anniversary of September 11 yesterday, and it was just a beautiful and solemn and very well-done occasion, and I would hope that we can all be mindful of that as we have a moment of silence first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
We are the world, which is them, the nation, and our God, the invisible, whatever it is, justice, home.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, item agenda number three. Ms. County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. To my knowledge, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Madam Chair, actually, I don't have a change to the agenda, but I would like to make a point of professional privilege.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, it's clear that people have been hurt. When people are hurt or killed, children especially, the perpetrators must be caught and brought to justice swiftly. And we, as elected officials, are sworn to uphold all the laws, especially the constitutions of New Mexico as well as the Constitution of the United States. So, I'm joining tonight District Attorney Bregman, Sheriff Allen, Mayor Keller, and Chief Police Medina in not supporting the governor's order of withholding Second Amendment rights. And also will not in any way attempt to enforce those laws here in Burnleyo County. I do want to point out that such enforcement would bring civil liability to the county, which is now an even greater focus that we need to focus on because of the Civil Rights Bill that was passed last year. Doing so would create a civil rights liability for our citizens as well as asking law enforcement to compromise their own oath, as well as put them in harm's way unnecessarily. So, also, most importantly, this would distract us from the ultimate goal of actually catching the perpetrators of the violence that has been plaguing our city. Finally, I just want to say thank you to all the responsible gun owners out there who helped to make this nation amazing and do contribute to the safety of our community. So, with that, Madam Chair, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Back to the agenda. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask for one minor change here. Could, I would like to suggest moving item D, item 5D, to item 5A.
Under Proclamations, yes, we will do that for you. Thank you. So, with the no further amendments, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, hold us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Item four, Count on Us, Tia Blam, I think. Julie Morgenbach, are you introducing this? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as everybody knows, our cyber criminals are getting more and more sophisticated and creative at attempts to steal away money from the government agencies and also private businesses and private citizens as well. I think we've all kind of experienced, you know, when we get spam calls and things like that. So, the county's IT department has stepped up its education efforts to train county employees on how to recognize phishing schemes when they land in our email boxes. So, a lot of times, we get them, and we don't really, we're not really sure. And so, there's a lot of, what the county IT department does is they send us these emails that really, they look like, oh, they're pretty legitimate, but they're really not. So, and we really appreciate that. So, I think once or twice, you know, some of us will respond, and then it's like, oh, gotcha. But thank goodness, the IT department, they're the ones that say, gotcha. But they're the ones that had, they spent a tremendous amount of hours training employees so that many of us know what to look for, what these phishing schemes are. So, I really appreciate that. So, it's a success, it's a success story. We consider that, and we're highlighting that this evening in our Count on Us Minute. So, with that, Tia will be presenting the video. Thank you, Madam Chair.
After our other big story tonight, a first-of-its-kind study investigates exactly how cybercriminals use email phishing attacks to successfully steal billions. Burnleyo County's IT department continually works to educate employees to resist any and all phishing attempts by cybercriminals. And while we always hear about the latest internet breaches and attacks on the evening news, here's one that details how diligent county practices saved the taxpayers more than a half million dollars.
We got an email from what reported to be a vendor, asking for some information to change the ACH information for their payments. It was one of our construction vendors, so it was a rather large amount.
ACH stands for Automatic Clearinghouse. It's a wire transfer from one bank to another. It's the way large business-to-business funds are transferred and a favorite of computer hackers.
We have a very vigorous process as far as what needs to be done to change that information.
You've no doubt heard of two-step verification. Well, Burnleyo County has a four-step verification for transactions like this one. Ever since COVID and the availability of information on government transparency portals, hackers are constantly trying to worm their way into financial systems like ours.
Cybercriminals use the information that we share from a transparency standpoint against us. So, they'll use things like a transparency portal to learn about the organization or learn about individuals in the organization, and then they will conduct a phishing attack known as a business email compromise, where they attempt to defraud money either from the agency or from the individual through paychecks or impersonating individuals in contracts.
And cybercriminals know that government agencies spend millions on capital improvement projects.
Perpetrators on the fraud piece, they pay attention. They know what's going on out there. They know who some of our bigger vendors were based on some information that was out previously. But it would have been a rather substantial loss, in one of the six figures, that's for certain.
The procurement and business services team thwarted this particular attack, as they have done with hundreds of others. But the Burnleyo County CIO conveys, it will get harder, not easier, as technology continues to change.
They are already very convincing, and I think with technology evolving as it has, they're going to be able to be even more convincing as technologies enable that. So, we kind of need to start developing those skills now to protect ourselves in the future.
And just for a moment, taxpayers in the county can breathe another sigh of relief until the next attempt shows up in someone's inbox.
And it's important that the accounts payable staff be commended on this also because they're the ones, and we're the ones that are ultimately responsible for the final payment going out. We're the gatekeeper, if you will. We have to make sure that everything is paid correctly and paid accurately to avoid situations that fraud is occurring.
Thank you. Do you, County Manager, any further comments, or we just do a round of applause for our fabulous IT staff? Thank you for what you do. So, we will now move on to agenda item number five, Proclamations. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to be reading this proclamation tonight, to recognize the hard work and the wonderful people in the village of Tejeras, the gateway to our east mountains. Just after the Carnual Land Grant is the Village of Tejeras. If you haven't been there, please go. And if you have, you know what a wonderful place it is and what a special part of our county it is. So, recently, they celebrated their 50th anniversary of incorporation as a village, and we have with us here today the mayor and some of the village staff with us to celebrate their celebration of the community. So, I'm going to read this into the record. This is an acknowledgement. The Burnleyo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge, 50th anniversary of the incorporation of the Village of Tejeras, acknowledging that Tejeras has a rich history dating back centuries from the Tejeras pueblo to European settlers, including the original owners of the Canyon de Carnual Land Grant, and acknowledging that Tejeras first appeared on a map in 1846 and was considered firmly established village by 1880, and acknowledging that 50 years ago in 1973, the Village of Tejeras was incorporated and received a charter from the state of New Mexico, and acknowledging that the Village of Tejeras hosted a community celebration on July 29, 2023, to mark the 50th anniversary, and acknowledging that since the time of its incorporation, the village has developed its infrastructure and services to better serve its residents, and acknowledging that over the last 50 years, Tejeras has grown from 104 acres to over 700 acres, and its population has increased from 300 to 546 people. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Burnleyo County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Village of Tejeras for its 50-year anniversary of incorporation, done this 12th day of September 2023 in Burnleyo County, state of New Mexico. Congratulations. And we do have Mayor Burton here with us, if you'd like to say a few words.
Real quick, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commission, and specifically, of course, Commissioner Olivas, it's an honor to accept this tonight. Thank you guys so very much. Our village is a tiny little village, but, man, we make a big footprint up there. Most people think they live in our village, but we're itty-bitty still. If it wasn't for my staff, if it wasn't for the people I work with, and everyone here knows that, if it wasn't for our community, we wouldn't be able to hold events like this. It was just an incredible event. I applaud these gentlemen here with me tonight, Nick Kennedy and Mike Limon. They did 95, 98% of the work. The rest of my staff did just amazing as well. We had everyone work with us on it, Commissioner Olivas. We had all of my council members, tons of community members. It was just an incredible event, and thank you guys for recognizing us for this tonight. Appreciate it.
Please come up and receive your proclamation or your acknowledgement. Our next proclamation is about Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Is that, am I wrong here?
I think they have it after. They moved up, Commissioner.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that. And we have Tatiana Vargas, a former patient and her family here. So, if you could come up while I read our proclamation, and we really appreciate it. The Burnleyo County Board of Commissioners, sponsored by all five of us commissioners, would like to proclaim this month, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas 46 children per day, or 16,790 children per year, are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S., and whereas at least one child from New Mexico is diagnosed with cancer each week, and whereas over 600 children from Burnleyo County have been diagnosed with cancer, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Burnleyo County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, to encourage all citizens of Burnleyo County to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across our country, done this 12th day of September 2023 in Burnleyo County, state of New Mexico. Thank you all for being here. Mr. Vargas, did you want to say anything? Or you don't have to, and you could just embrace and come up? Yes?
We just want to say thank you, and we're honored to, thank you, to accept this on behalf of patients and families affected by childhood cancer. It definitely, I, I'm sure there's a lot of people in here who have personally walked alongside someone who has fought. I'm sorry. And it takes a village. It takes a lot of people who care. And we couldn't have been able to stand up here without help from places like the Children's Cancer Fund of New Mexico, and Make-A-Wish of New Mexico, and our family at Presbyterian and UNM, and who am I forgetting? Family, friends, teachers, school staff. It just really does take a village, and so for you to recognize this is very special. Sorry. We all like to wear gold during the month of September, and we wear it all year long, but it's very special during the month of September to show your support for the children who have passed because of cancer and the children who are fighting. Tolly just passed four years disease-free in August. So, we're very happy to be here, so thank you so much.
Please come up and accept the proclamation. Okay, thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Barbo, Space Valley Coalition proclamation.
Now, it's time. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very excited about this evening, and so that I, so everything is informed and the public are informed about this awesome coalition and an economic development opportunity for New Mexico. I've asked Marcos Gonzalez and Randy Task and Monica Mitchell to come, but I'm going to first read the proclamation and then let you all give a minute of a story about it. Thank you so much. So, acknowledgement, and this is in my district, I just have to say a bunch of times tonight, because I'm happy about it. So, Space Valley Coalition, acknowledging over the course of the last century, the Rio Grande Valley region, or Space Valley, I like that, encompassing Colorado and New Mexico, has amassed some of the nation's most important space programs and assets, and acknowledging space research has the potential to usher the world into the next era of technology, impacting all industry and involving some of humanity's greatest challenges, and acknowledging Burnleyo County is home to the Air Force Research Lab, Space Rapid Capabilities Office, Space Systems Command, UNM COSMIAC Space Research, I think I'm supposed to name COSMIAC, sorry, Space Research Institute, and a wide array of space companies and nonprofit organizations, and acknowledging a Space Valley Coalition has been formed to leverage the region's space assets and capabilities to accelerate the nation's commercial space economy, a sector projected to reach $3 trillion by 2040, in my district, and acknowledging the Space Coalition is competing for the inaugural National Foundation Regional Innovation Engines Grant Program, and acknowledging Space Valley is one of 16 finalists narrowed down from 188 national applications, and acknowledging an NSF RIE award would mean up to $160 million over 10 years to bolster efforts to grow the region into the nation's leading space innovation hub, acknowledging the NSF is offering a clarion call to regional constituents to support Space Valley Coalition by supporting its proposed strategies and activities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Burnleyo County Board of Commissioners proudly answers the NSF's clarion call, pledging our support in any way appropriate to the success of Space Valley, done this 12th day of September 2023 in Burnleyo County, state of New Mexico. So, thank you. Very exciting, and so that everybody understands how exciting it is. We're going to hear from our folks here.
Thanks, Madam Vice Chair. Just to give a little context as well, is this was actually born out of the initial partnership that the city and the county had for international trade. We used to have the Albuquerque-Burnleyo County Trade Alliance, and then it grew so much that we had to have a New Mexico Trade Alliance, because we started doing a lot of partnerships with other communities for trade outside of New Mexico and outside of the U.S. And that led to AFRL wanting to use the Trade Alliance to be their fiscal partner as well to do a lot of activities. And so, just all of this great space activity has been born out of the initial partnership that the city and the county had on focusing on how do we get our businesses to be able to do business outside of the state and outside of the country as well. So, I'd like to introduce our Randy Trask with the New Mexico Trade Alliance, to give a little bit more about the future growth of the Q station and future growth of space in Burnleyo County, and Monica Mitchell with the city's Economic Development Office this year as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcos.
Thank you, Marcos, and thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is a huge, huge deal. Sometimes we get lost in the narrative that spaces about billionaires going to colonize Mars or even out of, it's a thing. And even out of New Mexico, Virgin Galactic sending up wealthy people to take, you know, eight-minute, you know, space rides. But the reality is, as it's said in the proclamation, and a lot of this was covered in the proclamation, this really is the next era of technology for the planet. Every aspect of our lives and every industry is going to be impacted by space and space research. And this is one of those very rare opportunities in New Mexico where we have a legacy in something that is heavily research and development, where it's always tended to be very defense-focused types of research and development through the laboratories, and it just so happens that it's a feeder to what could be one of the largest sectors the planet has ever seen. And we just happen to be sitting on a gold mine of assets and resources and federal agencies and institutions. But it's not ours for the taking. Texas, as a good example, just announced that they're funding their own $350 million biannual budgeted new space organization commission. Texas A&amp;M is going to build a $200 million campus to house it. And so, while we have a competitive advantage in this, it's going to take a regional effort. It's going to take all of us working together to not miss this incredible opportunity that's in front of us right now. I did want to recognize the two folks who came to join, also representing the Space Valley Coalition, Monica Mitchell, Deputy Director of Economic Development for the city. I cannot tell you how important working with both county and city economic development has been throughout all of this. So, I just want to recognize the significance of their participation in these, and other big strategies that we're working on in the region. And then Mathis Shinick over here in the back is representing New Space Nexus, another one of our coalition partners, that is one of many, including all of the major universities. Um, uh, that, uh, is one of many, including all of the major universities, Navaho Tech, uh, partnerships all the way up into Colorado. Uh, we've been told that at this point, um, this is the farthest we've ever gone as a state in one of these very large national economic development competitions, so, uh, we, we're, we're not there yet. We have a thirty percent chance of winning it and, uh, and thanks to your support and voicing your support uh, publicly as the clarion call from the NSF was stated, uh, that might be what helps push us over the edge to win this whole thing. So, thank you again and I really appreciate your support.
Bring your luck.
Thank you. Come up and, um.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, I just wanna say I got to visit Q Station, which is one of the hub, sorry, me, I'm Adam. Briefly, um, I got to visit the hub in, uh, at Q Station and it was just a really creative energetic space where people are coming together, um, working across sector, working across agencies and, um, it was a really exciting, um, place to see and I'm grateful for the work y'all are doing. Everybody light your candles if they get that grant.
Next, thank you. Um, Burnaleo County Fire and Rescue Emergency Response Agencies, um, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, uh, tonight we're gonna recognize several agencies, uh, I believe eight, that were all involved with, uh, fighting the fire that we've now come to known as the Plastic Fire down in the South Valley that, that we could see from miles around. And, um, so this is a little different. We have, we have several framed plaques down there. Um, but I'm not gonna read, and then I believe there's eight, I'm not gonna read this eight times, we're just gonna read it once for all the agencies. But the agencies are the Burnaleo County Fire and Rescue, Albuquerque Fire and Rescue, Kirtland Air Force Base Fire Department, New Mexico State Forestry, Corrales Fire Department, Sandoval County Fire Department, Town of Burnaleo Fire Department, and the Albuquerque Police Department. It's a pretty, pretty impressive, uh, cohesion and, uh, teamwork to do an amazing job. So the acknowledgement, Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge these agencies, acknowledging the bravery, hard work, and dedication of the emergency first responders who answered the call to amass a fire at a recycling center in Burnaleo County on August sixth, two thousand twenty-three. The coordination and professionalism they exhibited was truly exemplary. And acknowledging Burnaleo County Fire Rescue Fire Chiefs two and three, Battalion Commanders six and eight, Engine Thirty-Five Trucks Thirty-Eight and Thirty-Six, Water Tenders Thirty-One, Thirty-Three, and Thirty-Four, Brush Truck Thirty-Eight, Deputy Fire Marshal Thirty-Eight, Rehab Unit One, and PIO One. And acknowledging Albuquerque Fire Rescue Fire Chief One, Battalion Chiefs Two, Three, and Four, Engines One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Ten, Eleven, and Sixteen, Ladders One and Five, Rescues One, Two, and Three, Brush Trucks One, Two, Seven, Ten, Eleven, Sixteen, and Twenty-Two, Squads One, Two, and Three, Support Units One, Two, and Three, Command Unit One, and PIO One. Acknowledging Kirtland Air Force Base's Fire Department for dispatching a ladder truck and crew to fight the main body of the fire. And acknowledging New Mexico State Forestry for sending personnel and Type Six brush trucks to fight the wildland portion of the fire. And acknowledging the Corrales Fire Department for providing crews and Type Six brush trucks to assist with the ensuing wildland fire. And acknowledging the Sandoval County Fire Department for dispatching firefighters and Type Six brush trucks for the wildland firefight. And acknowledging the Town of Burnaleo Fire Department for allocating crew and Type Six brush trucks to battle the wildland part of the fire. And acknowledging the Albuquerque Police Department providing traffic control for scene safety and security and establishing a perimeter to prevent citizen access to unsafe areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Bo- Board of Commissioners thus acknowledges the dedicated first responders who bravely and selflessly responded to this fire and who serve their communities every day. We're truly grateful for you. Done this twelfth day of September twenty twenty-three in Burnaleo County, state of New Mexico. Presented this day, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, signed by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much. And Chief, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson and Commissioners, so thank you so much for the recognition. I'll keep it very, very short cuz I think one statement kinda sums it up. Irregardless of the patch that we may be wearing or the truck that we drive or the department that's paying our paychecks, doesn't matter when something like this event comes to, to pass. This could have been one of the more catastrophic events in the Albuquerque area if it weren't for the men and women that, you know, took charge of it and quickly doused that flame. Everyone in the area will recall this fire. Um, the amount of smoke that was, uh, coming from it was immense and dark and scary. So again, we couldn't do it, the city of Albuquerque, Albuquerque couldn't do it without the help of all of the men and women that are behind me and all of the agencies. When we're called upon, the one thing we do and we do well is we come together and we take care of the event. So thank you to everyone that's behind us on behalf of the city of Albuquerque whose jurisdiction this fire was in. I thank everybody for stepping forward and helping. Again, that's what we do and we do it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, we just wanted to acknowledge our public work staff and then thank you all for coming here, uh, today to the commission meeting. We just wanted to acknowledge you for your outstanding work at the Annual New Mexico Association of Counties Heavy Equipment Rodeo on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Team members from the Burnaleo County Public Works, uh, Road and Storm Drain Sections competed against heavy equipment operators from across the state in six events and bought home four individual championship wins as well as the overall county award and trophy. Yes, that's right. So, the members of the twenty twenty-three Burn Co rodeo team are Patrick Chavez, Mitch Kelly, Melissa Larry, Brandon McDonald, Angel, what's that?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, Angel Maldonado, Robert Miera, Gilbert Montoya, Chris Pacheco, Steve, um, Richardson, Robert Rivera, Robert Sanchez, Joseph Be Hill, Amor Solano, and Jessica Pacheco. So we just wanna congratulate our team for your outstanding, um, prowess at, uh, in, uh, heavy equipment operation and your success at the twenty twenty-three Heavy Equipment Rodeo. How many years in a row is this?
Fourteen, thirteen.
Just saying.
Eight out of thirteen.
Yeah, eight out of thirteen.
With two minus COVID.
So, uh, thank you, um, County Manager, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commission. I just wanted to acknowledge the individuals who, uh, placed. And I, I wanna preface this and our first, our, our two first-place winners were both women, so I wanna say that. Uh, so, uh, our, uh, Melissa Larry, uh, right here, she's, she's, she has her, her, uh, her award here. She got first, first place in Skid steer. And, uh, we also have an event, um, that allows, um, spouses to, to participate. And so, uh, Jessica Pacheco, she is the spouse of one of our operators, so she, she got first place in the, uh, Women's Backup Event. And then, uh, we had a second place, uh, for the excavator, which was Brandon McDonald, I'm not sure if he's here. Uh, and then, uh, we have Chris Pacheco, who second place in the loader event. So we both have those guys, so I just wanted to say thank you for the acknowledgement and, uh, um, this is our version of, uh, of, of art. So we have these in our office, so, um, we encourage you guys to come, come by and take a, take a look at them all that are displayed in our, in our building, so.
Madam Chair. Can I, I just wanna point out something, that this competition just really draws attention to your, the abilities of your department. But it, the truth is, is that it's a great place to, to demonstrate your efficiency and your, and your skill and your profession, which then benefits the entire county. Because what you're doing on a day-to-day basis is, in public works, is, uh, doing roadwork or even emergency work when, when seconds matter. And so, this is a fun event and, and it's sweet to see a first place, but the, the real impact is the impact that you have on the community that's just reflected by this trophy. So, well done. Good job.
Thank you.
Keep winning.
One, two, three.
Say grand champs.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Uh, now we will move on to public comment and communications. Uh, for the purpose of maintaining order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect to everyone present, each person has two minutes to speak. All comments or questions to the Commissioners must go through the chair. If the conduct of the presenter at the discretion of the chair violates these rules, they may be asked to be excused from the room. Each person has two minutes and you'll be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way up to the podium. If you are in person, before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And Julianne, please call the names.
Madam Chair, we have twelve sign, speakers signed up this evening, all in person. And we will start off with Ramona Goldsby, followed by John Veltre, followed by Carlos Benavides.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ramona Goldsby and I am here tonight to speak to you as I have been for the past several months. This past week, the statement "Elections Have Consequences" has been on display for the world to see. An emboldened self-proclaimed dictator issued a health emergency against gun violence, EO twenty twenty-three dash one three zero. She made criminals out of law-abiding citizens. We mourn the loss of any life, but we all know guns do not kill people, people kill people. We have a health emergency caused by mental health issues, addiction, homelessness, poverty, hopelessness, and the loss of spiritual compass, not guns. It is like saying the pencil failed the test and the car ran the red light. It's time for accountability and to address the real health emergencies. Put an ordinance in place to give Burnaleo County the legal leverage to only enforce laws that adhere to the Constitution. It is up to this commission to exercise your authority. You have the authority. It was given to you by the people and the New Mexico Constitution. You can regulate county precinct and district affairs. Remember, remember the seventh of November, it's time to take a stand. They are taking away our rights, so together we must band. If you do not do this now, we will be a people without a land.
Thank you.
I'm gonna wait till you receive what I asked to be passed out just prior to getting up here before I start and thank you. Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. John Veltre, nonpartisan. First things first, the Second Amendment is a constitutional right and no emergency mandate can take our right away. Commissioners, I would like to reflect a little bit on the past, the current, and the future. Starting with the past by reading a quote, and I quote word for word that I believe millions have already heard and will never forget and others might want to forget. Quote, "We have put together, I think, the most extensive and inclusive voter fraud organization in the history of American politics." Joe Biden. Tonight, there will be several speakers following me. They will talk about the current issues and concerns around election integrity that have existed for nearly the last two years. These issues will be around the false narrative, how every vote should count, how voting should be made easy, undermining election integrity through dirty voter rolls using the race card and voter suppression, motor vehicle registration, same-day registration, absentee and early voting, harvesting ballots, centralized county centers mailing of unsolicited ballots and ballot drop boxes. The future remedy to restore election integrity is simple, but as we've learned for the last eighteen months, it's not easy. We will continue to work on making wrongs right, making the processes that are not so good better, and also in ways like the current referendum efforts, which are currently underway. We will continue to do this in a polite, professional, and Christian-like manner in the best interests of all mankind regardless of the side of the aisle you sit on. We will restore election integrity to the federal election systems conducted on Election Day with separate paper ballots for each race that are hand-counted at precincts after the polls close. We will do an all-of-the-above strategy to restore election integrity. This is a wound that will not heal until we do so. Elections have consequences. Remember, we together can and will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carlos Benavides, followed by Gerardo Cionello, followed by Gregory Spackman.
Um, I came to talk about the issues about the governor and, and I'd like to applaud you guys for standing up for the, uh, Second Amendment. Um, Article Six, Section Two of the Constitution, uh, says that uh, anything contrary to the Constitution is not withstanding. That means it doesn't have any standing in law. And when you guys uphold your aunt, your, your oath, it, it makes you guys look good. It makes you guys look good. And for those that try to overcome the Constitution, it doesn't make them look good. For instance, the governor. That doesn't look good when she's trying to, uh, take people's rights away. But, uh, I think one suggestion that we can do for people that are scared about all the violence that is going on around here is, is not take the guns away from people, but put guns in the hands of people. Let them be able to protect themselves. The police can be there all the time. We can give guns to people, uh, register them, you know, have them take classes. That way it makes the field even with the criminals and the people. The people have guns now. It levels out the field. We should have a program to put guns in the hands of people. Register them, give them some classes, show them how to be safe with the, with the guns. That way they can protect themselves and we don't have to exert all of our, uh, police forces and put them in danger when we have the responsibility to take care of ourselves. It's our responsibility. Uh, when we give up our rights for security, we deserve neither. We don't deserve our rights or security if we're gonna give up those rights. And that, that can be a suggestion, like I said, put ha- guns in the hands of the citizens, give them training.
Thank you, Mr. Benavides.
Maybe that could be something to, to think about.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. My name is Dr. Gerardo Cionello. I would like my comments recorded for public record. This evening, I'm going to talk on playing the race card and voter suppression. Playing the race card, all parties but some more than others routinely play the race card in order to guilt or shame other voters and/or candidates. The fact of the matter is that this tactic is worn out and we, the people, have recognized the truth that anyone that plays the race card is indeed a racist. The only systematic racism in this country that we have observed in decades within a particular party which has overused this tactic in pursuing election progress some time. Voter suppression, like the boy that cried wolf too many times, this party has overused accusation of voter suppression. They almost always couple this accusation with playing the race card, which is in under itself a racist act for making the accusation. They imply that members of their victim groups are stupid or incompetent. If you want voter ID because it makes the election more secure, they scream voter suppression. They assert that somehow the votes of our black brothers and sisters are suppressed because they either don't, don't have ID. because they either don't, don't have IDs or can't easily get IDs. Any measure that we might propose to improve election integrity will elicit charges like voter suppression from certain parties. The only vote that truth-seeking and truth-speaking patriots would like to suppress are illegal votes. Should every honest American deserve the same thing? Now, with that said, do you believe the governor's executive order is unconstitutional? Did you swear a note to protect our Constitution? Is governor's mandate constitutional? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gregory Spackman, Nicolas Morales, Louis Martinez.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Gregory Spackman and I thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to speak about ballot harvesting and centralized counting centers. While I do not know if Bernalillo County uses or encourages these practices, I strongly recommend the county not engage in them. Ballot harvesting allows a third party to come between the ballot cast and counting of that ballot. There's a great opportunity for switching, discarding, or providing additional ballots. There are serious chain-of-custody issues and it should never be used. Furthermore, I am concerned about the potential for absentee ballots to fall into the hands of someone other than for whom they were intended. Counting centers with electronic counting machines provide an opportunity for erroneous and sometimes fraudulent counts. The accuracy of the counting machines must be checked and maintained. A paper trail is necessary as well. As for myself, I am convinced of irregularities and perhaps fraud in the last election. Voting must be monitored, ballots certified, and counting machines verified. Also, transfer of ballots must be done securely. No more finding of thousands of ballots, often in favor of only one candidate after counting has been completed. Election integrity must be restored.
Thank you, Mr. Spackman.
Thank you.
Nicolas Morales, Louis Martinez, Fred Bacon.
Hello, good evening. My name is Nicolas Morales, from Albuquerque, New Mexico. I want to be speaking on Recovery Month. Thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to speak in front of you. As you guys know, this month started off the recovery celebration. But for many families, Recovery Month is not a month to celebrate. It's a month where they're reminded of the deaths that they have lost, they're reminded of the people that they have no longer at the table. Well, I'm sure that you guys hear many of those stories. I'd like everybody here just to take a moment and think about the individual who has substance use. Think about the individual who overdrinks. And I'd like you to take a moment and think about the individual who graduates from college on the dean's list. Graduates from college cum laude. I'd like you to take a moment and think about the authors that you might know, the business owners that you might know. My question is, is there any overlap? Well, I'm sure that you guys have had many people come and show their stories, so I'm here to show mine. I come from those same circumstances. 10 years ago, I was shooting heroin on the streets of Albuquerque. Seven years ago, I was drinking two bottles a day. Now, I stand as a business owner, here in Albuquerque as well. Published author, bestselling, helping individuals from Nigeria to Canada overcome whatever vices they might be choosing to use, because it is a choice. So, I just wanted to come and say thank you. Thank you for evaluating the county's opportunities for the services and the providers that we currently have, because there is change that needs to happen and I see you guys doing that. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Hi, my name's Louis Martinez. It's my first time here. I came here tonight to kind of give a recognition and a moment of reflection for many of people that are experiencing really tough times, even dangerous situations. And specifically, I wanted to speak about the abortion centers around the Albuquerque area. And I also wanted to address a number of the bills that have been recently passed by the House and the Senate, championed by the governor, you know? And so the first one that I wanted to address on that list was House Bill Number 7. This legislation is very interesting because it's, it's not a partisan thing, it's a people thing. And when you read the legislation, legislation that's penned on this, it becomes very clear that it affects every New Mexico family in some way, irrespective of politics. And how does it affect us? Well, this bill basically, along with many of the others, under the guise of gender care and, and other titles, it's a compilation of six bills between the Senate and the House, basically threaten teachers, social workers, nurses, many of those who may socially object to committing or allowing a child to sexually mutilate their genitalia or chemically castrate their genitalia, they are forced to do this irrespective of that. And I, I think that's really unfair. And if this has to be done by circumventing mothers and fathers, then this is something that we need to question. This is not right. And if somebody as young as a fifth grader is making these decisions, then this is delusional and it is dangerous. And so I ask, I implore on the leadership here that's gathered to address this issue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Fred Bacon, Patrick Sice, Mary Ingram.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fred Bacon and I live here in Bernalillo County. And I would like my comments to be recorded for public record. And this evening, I'm going to talk on same-day registration and absentee and early voting. Same-day registration, allowing people to register to vote on the same day that an election is conducted is one of the many methods by which certain parties pursue their all-above strategy in undermining election integrity. There is no reason for states to allow people to register to vote on Election Day other than to undermine election integrity. It makes too much sense to close out the window for voter registration 30 days prior to an election in order to publish the complete list of election voters in the election. This looks too much like election integrity to be something that certain parties would accept. Allowing same-day registration, like many other tactics and methods, is an artificial line drawn in the sand. They will get on their moral high ground horses and vigorously defend the right of voters to register as late as possible as if it is a natural right given to us by our Creator, when in fact, they are simply maximizing their opportunity to commit election fraud. Next topic is absentee and early voting. Is that absentee voting and, and early voting has always been problematic in maintaining election integrity. It is difficult to maintain chain of custody on such ballots. As ballots bounce around the postal service and election offices, too many hands touch these ballots to make absentee or early voting acceptable, except for the military or limited cases.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patrick Sice. I'm from Bernalillo County. I would like to, my comments recorded for the public record. This evening, I am going to be talking on dirty voter rolls, motor roll registration, dirty voter rolls. Judicial watchers and other groups concerned about election integrity have worked tirelessly, tirelessly through courts to try, to try to require state and local jurisdictions to clean up voter rolls. This effort, this efforts have been fought tooth and nail. And when judicial watch and other, sorry about that, compliance don't necessarily follow. The problem is dangerous. That some jurisdictions have significantly more registered voters than vote, than legal vote, voters. Motor voter registration, some, some states like New Mexico allow voter registration when people get driver's licenses and the Department of Motor Vehicles. They use an argument that it just makes it easier for people to get registered to vote, which is true. But during this point in time, they don't check to see if they're eligible for, to be registered. So, a lot of illegal stuff goes on there. And if you don't believe it, just look what's going on now. You got this, an election that's coming up, you have a first time ever, you have a leading candidate going after the leading candidates of the other party. Every time something happens to Joe Biden, they go after him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ingram, followed by Adam Lopez, followed by Melanie Rubin.
Good evening. I would like to have my comments recorded, please. My name is Mary Ingram from the Far South Valley. And I have two comments on elections. One, that we, there's a lot of talk about counting every vote, but my, my comment is that we need to count every legal vote, obviously, and make sure that, that each voter is, is a legal voter. And I think voter identification is one of the main, main things that we can do for that, as well as signature verification. And I think we've made our voting too, too easy and too long. And we, I think we waste a lot of resources of having people go, you know, if you go the first day that it's open and they've got a whole month of it, there's, you know, seven or eight people sitting in a lot of centers waiting, hoping that somebody will come in to vote. And I think that's not a, not a good use of our resources, so I'd like to have us take a look at that. And I, I know that you guys have heard of the New Mexico Referendum Project. We, as citizens of New Mexico, have the right to fight against bad bills or laws that are passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. There's currently a grassroots team in all of our 33 counties gathering signatures on the six egregious laws that went into effect on July 1st. I urge you to, each one of you, to, to sign the petitions for the, for the four laws related to children and parents' rights. Mr. Martinez spoke of some of that. And two massive changes to our election laws. One law is over 170 pages of changes to our election laws, which I think were already pretty good. I would ask you to please look at the laws, read them as best you can, and if you agree that, that they should be on the ballot for the citizens to decide in November 2024, please go to bettertogethernewmexico.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, my name is Adam Lopez. I'm here to talk about National Recovery Month as well, that is September. Like Mr. Morales, myself, I'm very thankful, forever grateful for the treatment centers, specifically Matt's Detox here in Albuquerque. Five years ago, I was completely lost, hopeless. I didn't know what to do. I did something that I'd been fighting for over 20 years and I was asked for help. Through asking for help, we found a local detox facility here in town, Matt's Detox, which is now the Care Campus. And it was my first of many trips, but it started a cycle of recovery and it changed my life. You know, and today I work for a nonprofit, YDI. You know, I'm a peer coordinator and what I do is I work with individuals that are incarcerated, help them with the resources that they may need when they're going to be released. And it's no surprise that a lot of the individuals that I work with have a background of substance and alcohol abuse, right? So, you know, being able to deal with them and speak to them about my personal experience, the way that I was able to turn my life around is, is a huge bonus, you know? So, I'm forever thankful for the treatment facilities, everything that you guys do, and, you know, maybe ask for a little bit more treatment and recovery in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Olivas has a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you for coming and sharing your story, sir, both, both of you gentlemen. It's just so important for us to hear the, the good news, the good things happening in our community too, and, you know, your, your struggle is really just a, you know, the, the end result is, is a beautiful thing and I appreciate you being here, sharing your story, sharing your recovery, and now passing that on to other individuals through your mentoring and your, your work in our community. So, really appreciate you being here and sharing that with us.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Madam Chair and County Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak here and thank you for your service to our county. I've been a resident of Bernalillo County for almost 25 years. That's the longest time I've ever lived anywhere and it's because I love this place. So, I'm here to speak about the problem that we've had with the violation of our Second Amendment and the governor's executive order. And the problem that this represents, putting our counties in a bad position to represent bad law, not law, violation of law. And so some counties are now putting into effect or submitting ordinances that would protect the county in not having to comply with laws that violate the Constitution. And I would submit to you that it would be really wonderful if we could have an ordinance like that in Bernalillo County that would protect our county commission, it would protect our county residents, and it would protect our law enforcement from having to enforce illegal, unconstitutional laws or regulations. So, I would ask you to consider implementing such an ordinance. And we can see that by our Attorney General informing the governor that he won't support these type of laws and six Democratic senators today sending notification to our governor that they will not support an enforcement like this, that this type of thing hopefully won't be supported on a state level. But in any case, we need protection on a county level because this is not always working on a state level. You need protection, residents need protection, so please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. We move on to item seven on the agenda, approval of minutes. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the August 8th, 2023 administrative meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Item B, do I have a motion to approve the August 22nd, 2023 administrative meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to item eight, approval of our consent agenda. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you for the, the moment here. I just wanted to recognize the individuals on this consent agenda that are being appointed to various roles serving our county on boards and commissions and thank them for their volunteer service to our county and the important work that they'll be doing on behalf of this county. Thank you.
And we move on to item nine, adoption of ordinance amendment to the county code. Transparency portal amendments. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, ma'am. 9A is ordinance 2023-96.
Thank you. Are we all now?
Madam Chair?
Oh, Commissioner Olivas.
I wanted to actually request a two-week deferral on this item. We received a couple of late comments today. One actually just came in a few moments ago and another one earlier in the day that I wanted to have a chance to, to talk with the individuals that had sent this comment. And I did work with, with staff with Mr. Benavides and Mr. Rubin. And, and, uh, I did work with, with staff with Mr. Benavides and Mr. Grubusak on a couple of changes to the ordinance that, that have been made. Uh, and I'm not sure if the letters we received in response are, are in response to the amended version or the original version. And so I'd like to give a little more time for, uh, to, to interface with these individuals specifically and also for the public to, to generally, uh, comment on what is remaining. So I would also ask if, if we do grant this deferral for two weeks, that we also leave this item up for public comment.
At this moment?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I speak? Thank you. Also, the, the amendments that have been made have been, have been done so in an effort to improve transparency. Um, and Commissioner Olivas, I think, uh, put some good work in, uh, along with county staff in terms of, the, the goal of this is to secure the county, prevent another mass cyber attack like, like we suffered, uh, before. And, and yet not, not, uh, harm transparency to the public. So the amendments that have already been made, I think, do that really well. It's a fine line to balance. So, um, but based on this recent letter we see, we've received, I think we should defer it as well.
Um, so I will ask, uh, a position on that from the parliamentarian. Do, do we convene the public hearing? We can reduce the, uh, the speaker's time and then we defer, or do we defer it prior?
Madam Chair, I would recommend that you defer prior. Um, we did not have any sign-ups just for the record.
We don't have a public hearing. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to defer this for two weeks?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, item nine B, economic development, um, project revenue bond for Los Selena Apartments. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty.
And Marcos Gonzalez.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of an ordinance authorizing the Burnaleo County Commission to approve a project revenue bond application not to exceed twenty million dollars on behalf of the Supportive Housing Coalition of New Mexico and Thomas Development Company. I'll stand for any questions.
And, um, any questions? So we need to convene a meeting, a, a public hearing on this.
Madam Chair, for the record, we have no sign-ups for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Our Commissioner, Vice Chair Barbola.
Just want to appreciate you again for this work to continue to increase housing, quality housing for our communities. Thank you again, Marcos.
Thank you.
Director Gonzalez.
Yes, I too wanted to thank you, um, Director Gonzalez. It's, um, really good to see a hundred units going in, out on the west side. And I'm specifically joyous about this being senior affordable housing near our Los Volcán senior center out there. It just makes a lot of sense. And, uh, so I move approval.
Thank you. And then just for clarity, this will be next to the sister project of San Roque, which was for multifamily. So a multifamily and senior will be located together.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you, Marcos. Um, also item C, economic development, Marcos to present. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of an ordinance authorizing the Burnaleo County Commission to approve an industrial revenue bond application not to exceed eight point seven million dollars on behalf of Johnson Storage Moving and Company. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Uh, we now convene a public hearing. Julianne, do we have any?
Madam Chair, for the record, we do not have any sign-ups for this item.
Thank you. And in Commissioner Casala's absence, I will move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
And that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcos. Item ten, adoption of resolutions, a capital improvement program, Burnaleo County Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Chief of Government Affairs, um, Kathy Court. Madam Clerk, can I get an AR number, please?
Yes, ma'am. AR twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six.
Thank you. Ms. Court.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Um, before you today is a motion, a request for you to approve administrative resolution adopting the twenty-five to twenty-nine infrastructure capital improvement plan for all county facility types, including senior citizen facilities and meal sites. Uh, the twenty twenty-five, twenty to twenty twenty-nine ICIP establishes preliminary priorities for twenty twenty-four capital outlay requests to the state of New Mexico. The state of New Mexico requires an ICIP for senior citizens' facilities and meal sites that is separate from the other project types, but allows all projects to be combined into a single adopting resolution. Both ICIPs are based on and mirror the county's capital improvement program database, which is updated by staff project experts annually. As recommended by our state lobbyists, uh, Burnaleo County Departments reviewed and prioritized their projects, reducing from one hundred and thirty-seven projects in the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight ICIP to the current seventy-one projects for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. The prioritized projects in the ICIP are for infrastructure, public safety and recreational facilities. The ICIP plan includes eight service categories for nonprofit services and projects that were vetted by the Burnaleo County Selection Advisory Committee and the multi-award RFP that closed on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The ICIP for senior citizen facilities and meal sites has four projects, Alameda Senior Meal Site, Paradise Hills Senior Annex, Rio Bravo Meal Site, and the South Valley Senior Meal Service. Staff recommends commission approval and I stand for any questions. Thank you.
I would like to just state publicly, thank you, Ms. Court, for your good work on this. You were very diligent, hardworking, um, really tried to reach out to all of us or succeeded in reaching out to all of us, not tried. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
After Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you as well, Kathy, for your diligent effort on this and helping educate us and arrange so many meetings so quickly to turn this around really quickly. Um, and I, I just, thank you for an excellent work product and, and being an excellent, uh, asset to the county. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, uh, thank you. This has been your first time, uh, handling this behemoth. You've done great and been so flexible even up to the last minute, even today, in answering questions, uh, creating peace of mind and working with all of us well. Thank you so much. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Good, good work. Item ten B, finance, property tax mill rates for twenty twenty-three, DCM Shirley Reagan or Denise? Um, first, Madam Clerk, may I have an AR number?
Yes, ma'am. AR twenty twenty-three dash ninety-seven.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I am Denise Benavides, the Principal Financial Analyst for the Finance Division. The Department of Finance and Administration of the State of New Mexico has sent the property tax rate-setting order to Burnaleo County. Things to note, the overall ta- total values have increased four point eight nine percent. The overall tax rate has increased by one point two zero mills. However, um, Burnaleo County's mill rate has only increased point zero six nine. The tax rate of one point two six four for the debt levy mill rate has been affirmed. The county has maintained this rate since the tax year of twenty fourteen, resulting in a stable debt capacity without causing a tax increase when the county goes to sell bonds. In accordance with the Mexico State Statute seven dash thirty-eight dash thirty-four, the Board of County Commissioners is mandated to issue its own written order imposing tax rates in conformance with the amounts in the order from DFA. Therefore, the Finance Division is recommending the approval of the administrative resolution acknowledging receipt of the State and New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration orders setting property tax rates for twenty twenty-three tax year. After the receipt of the ti- after the receipt of the rate-setting order and the order imposing the tax, but no later than October first of the tax year, the county assessor will prepare a property tax schedule for all properties subject to the property taxation in the county, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Benavides? No. Do I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm next.
You're next. Sorry. Item eleven, you're ahead of me. Finance.
Um, this motion, the first motion is to approve an amendment three for the MOU between Burnaleo County and Albuquerque Burnaleo County Water Utility Authority to provide an additional seven million four hundred and seventy-three thousand eighty-six dollars in ARPA funding. Increasing the total ARPA sub award from fifty-five million eight sixteen five seventy-three to sixty-three million two eighty-three six fifty-nine. So this increase is due to the final burial depth. The amount of pavement impacted is greater than originally anticipated. In addition, the original forced main line increased from four inches to ten inches, both resulting in increased construction costs to the project. This amendment provides the additional funding needed for, um, the project known as I seven MDC Water and Sewer Improvements Project, enabling the Water Util- Utility Authority to continue the scope of work outlined in the sub-recipient agreement. The timing of this project also directly impacts the county-led project of the decommissioning of the Lagoon approved by the BCC on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. The last motion authorizes the county manager to execute the sub- recipient agreement amendment with the Water Utility Authority for the additional funding identified in amendment three. And this will ensure compliance with the statutory and regulatory requirements and the terms and, and conditions of the award from ARPA. I stand for questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Um, I just wanted to sort of e- explain something for anyone in the public that, that might be looking at this. Uh, to be clear, this adds additional monies, uh, roughly four and a half, four point four million to the MDC project. But the sixty-three million dollar total is for the entirety of the MOU with the water authorities. So that includes project like the, the Kirtland Interceptor, the Karnwell Water Sewer Project, all of the water sewer projects that we are assisting with through our ARPA funds, correct?
So, um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, the, actually the amount is seven point four. The four point two is the original amount that we had authorized before, and now we're adding additional seven point four. So I think I heard you say four point two. The increase is seven point four.
Okay. It's an additional seven point four, not, uh, up to seven point four.
Correct. So the total amount of the award for the MDC improvements would be about a little over eleven million dollars.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
So I move approval of amendment three to the MOU and also authorize, um, motion to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute subsequent agreements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Do I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Item eleven B, procurement and business services, purchase of a used helicopter for the Sheriff's Department.
Madam Chair.
Sheriff and, uh, DCM Lisa Sedia White to present, and Commissioner Benson has a question.
Thank you. Madam Chair, um, I would like to be on the record to make a motion to approve this before, uh, you all speak, which I'm looking forward to, but I do want to make a couple of comments. The, um, after the, the fatal accident, uh, last July of the helicopter unit, I, I stood with the sheriff and the sheriff's department at the first press conference in September, um, September seventh, actually, where, um, I stated that I would support, uh, every effort to get the, get this unit back up and running. And it was going to be a, a major, major pull. Sheriff Allen stepped in and has, uh, carried that torch forward and, um, very well. I would say we need this, uh, for, to resume our search and rescue. Uh, Sheriff's Department have been heroes, uh, and without recognition because of this. The, just the, just the rescue of the, the frozen tram gondola up on the mountain. The state doesn't have any of the resources to, to do those kind of rescues. We recently had an elderly gentleman, uh, who succumbed in the, um, mountain, uh, because we couldn't get to him in time. And that's what this unit does. And so, uh, thank you, Sheriff and, um, this, uh, Deputy County Manager, uh, Sedia White. I will turn it back to you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and I will second that and please.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, um, Commissioner Benson. Uh, members of the Commission, uh, this evening, um, we are presenting a, um, the title is purchase of a used helicopter for the Sheriff's Department. Um, for motions to authorize the county manager to award a request for proposal that was previously solicited by the purchasing department on behalf of the Sheriff's Department to purchase a used helicopter or prove equal. Second motion is to authorize the county manager to approve the agreement with the highest-ranked offerer. As stated before, the solicitation, uh, was advertised and we are currently in the procurement process. Um, with this motion, uh, we would also ask the Commission, um, in addition to authorizing the county manager to approve the agreement, um, that is of, of the highest-ranked offer, um, to authorize the county manager to approve any amendments or subsequent agreements to the approved agreement. And lastly, to authorize the county manager to appropriate, appropriate general fund balance, um, in the amount of the contract that is negotiated and approve expenditures that exceed, um, her authority. So, um, as stated before, uh, we are currently in the procurement process. We want to, for the reasons that Commissioner Benson mentioned, we want to expedite the procurement of an aircraft for the Sheriff's Department. And so, um, we will, um, if this motion is approved this evening, the procurement, um, and Business Services Department will continue to, their due diligence on the procurement, uh, negotiate a contract with the highest-ranked offer and proceed with the purchase. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Sheriff John Allen.
Madam Chair and Commission, uh, good evening. Um, I'd like to continue what Deputy County Manager Lisa Sedia White also said and Commissioner Benson. Uh, we are trying to build back, uh, better and stronger. Uh, we have our pilot sergeant, uh, Charles Lil and Lieutenant Ryan Zamora. They've been doing a lot of research for us. And we've been, uh, very detailed in our research and to make sure that this air unit, uh, not only for patrol with the crime epidemic and everything else that we're seeing, but at the same time for search and rescue and at a later time for fire suppression. As the Commissioner Benson said, uh, there are no other entities within the state of New Mexico that depends on us, uh, depends on anybody else more than a Burnaleo County Sheriff's Office. Uh, just locally, uh, there's been three or four incidents to where a search and rescue, and if we had, uh, this type of aircraft, we could have saved a life. And one life, uh, means a lot. It's just not all about patrol. It's about search and rescue and serving the community the best we can in any way possible. Um, this helicopter or this air unit also, uh, with safety. Uh, I really believe the safety is a big benefit for us. We know what the tragedy and the people that we lost, we take that seriously. And we also owe it to the families that are left without a loved one, uh, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, to make sure that we buy the best equipment at the same time, uh, being good stewards of taxpayers' money. Any questions? I'm, uh, present for them.
Any questions? Mr. Olivas.
Madam Chair, I had, uh, one question here, uh, which I think was answered in the general fund appropriation. But a little bit of a concern that I have is that there is no amount here. So typically it seems like we will see, um, an appropriation amount like we did on the resolution we just did for the, uh, Water Authority. Is there a dollar amount attached to this?
Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Olivas, um, we are, as I stated, we are in, currently in the procurement process. Uh, we do have, uh, an estimated amount of approximately six point five million, um, that we're looking, um, to appropriate towards this purchase of that. Um, we have about two point four million in insurance recoveries, um, from the aircraft, the aircraft that, that, that went down. So we're looking, uh, we haven't, we haven't, um, we're still going through the procurement process and we haven't even started to negotiate, but we're looking at right around six point five million with two point four million coming from insurance recoveries.
With this, to be clear, I'm sorry, this doesn't specify an amount. So I'm a little bit concerned that this is, is sort of a blank check here, but what, what safeguards do we have on this that there's?
So, um, Madam, um, Shirley, go ahead.
I was just gonna add to what you're saying, um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas. The reason the amount is not there, like she said, she's in negotiations. And also the DFA requires that the FRs, the financial resolutions, have the exact amount that we're appropriating. So since we don't know that, we were asking that you grant that authority to Julie, and then we would be able to have that amount. The $2.4 million from the insurance reimbursement is sitting in fund balance, that we kept it there. And then we also had been accumulating some dollars in fund balance in anticipation of replacement of Metro Air when it crashed. So there's funding there. We just don't know the exact amount, and we have to, the financial resolutions have to have the exact amount on them.
And is there a particular reason why we didn't just do an FR on this instead of this route?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, it's because, as Shirley said, we can't do an FR as per DFA guidelines, right, and policies?
It has to have the exact amount. And since we don't know what the negotiations are going to come out to be, we don't know the exact amount.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm still just, what I guess I'm getting at here, then, is why would we not wait until we have an RFP awarded and then award a specific dollar amount on that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, because of the urgency to want to procure a helicopter for security reasons, as the sheriff just explained, we're wanting to try to expedite the purchase of an aircraft. We went through the procurement process. As I stated before, we're looking at possibly spending approximately $6.5 million for the purchase of this aircraft. And so we wanted to come before the Commission to expedite the procurement of this particular aircraft for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and DCM Sedia White and Reagan for updating me on that. I will reluctantly support this because it's an important public safety matter, and I get that. But given the speed that we can move an FR through this commission like we do all the time, it would seem to me like in the future, there's no reason that we couldn't do it that way, given that we meet every two weeks. I just have a little bit of reservation as, you know, a fiscal steward of the taxpayers, of not actually knowing how much money we're appropriating to this. I trust everybody here and what you're providing, and I think it's a really important need. So for those reasons, I will support it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
May I comment on that? I think the points are well made by Commissioner Olivas. And the way I understand it is that the 6.4 is pretty accurate. It's not a blank check to put your concerns at ease. And to write it out as the amount would just would hamstring us in case it's a little above or a little less. So that's why I was okay with it, for that reason. But point's well made. However, I do want to ask, and I'll let you speak to it, from my understanding, this is a used helicopter that we're shopping for. And just can you explain the difference in cost between a used versus a new one? I think that's important as far as maximizing tax dollars, which I think you are doing. Also, if there's any concern about, hey, wait a minute, this is a used helicopter, what are we getting? I know there's several safeguards that the sheriff has put into the new helicopter we've got with autopilot and so forth. So can you please speak to that?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Benson, the difference in cost from a used helicopter to a new helicopter, we're looking at upwards of $15 million for a new helicopter versus a used helicopter with all of the safeguards. There are several items and specifications that would come with the, you know, with the due diligence and the checking. So the difference would be anywhere from, like I said, $6.5 million estimate to about $15 million, $15, $16 million for a new aircraft with the same features.
Sheriff, would you, is there anything we need to add to that?
Madam Chair, I'm Sergeant Lil, supervisor of the air unit and pilot. And yes, because it's a used helicopter, I think that's the urgency in this request, is finding a used helicopter in this category with all the safety features that we want on it, with the low airtime on it, so that we know it's a safe airframe. These go rather quickly. So if we are able to negotiate an acceptable offer, then we have to move rather quickly.
I have a quick question. Just in general, you're going to know what I'm going to say, Sheriff, about the work with the city of Albuquerque for this air unit and just what your plans are in terms of working together with APD.
Yes. In light of everything that's gone on in the last four or five days and the numerous meetings I've had, we know with the initiative with the gun violence that we're also seeing in the Bernalillo County area, that APD cannot do this by themselves. And I saw something with the Metro Crime Initiative today that I need to correct with the mayor also. But for us to be a partner with Albuquerque Police Department, since we're here in the same county, to make sure that when they don't have an air unit up, we are able to supplement, not really necessarily 24/7, but making sure at the peak hours, when we identify the crime that we have, when patrols are out, if we're doing any special operations for all the initiatives that we're doing, that way we can partner together. So definitely would be a combined effort.
Thank you.
And a force multiplier also.
Thanks. Any other questions? So we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11C, Public Works Division, Agreement with Homewise for Off-Site Sanitary Sewer and Storm Drain Improvements. Mr. Elias Archuleta.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Elias Archuleta, Deputy County Manager for Public Works, before you're tonight to request your approval of an agreement between the county and Homewise for off-site sanitary and storm drain improvements associated with the Sombra that also, or OESTA Townhome Subdivision. These funds were, this agreement is supporting 2022 Legislative Capital Outlay Appropriation of $550,000 in support of affordable housing project in that area. We worked with Homewise to identify some public infrastructure that's required in the area to support the subdivision, and that's what this agreement is referring to. Essentially, the agreement states that any costs above the capital outlay appropriate amount will be covered by Homewise. And so we have two checkpoints that will do that. Once we bid the project, if it comes over, at that point, Homewise will let us know if they have the money to move forward. If they do decide that, and we move forward at any change order, they'll have an up or down on that one, and we won't move forward unless they have funding to offset that. This would basically be a zero balance for the county. So we'd only be spending capital outlay or Homewise dollars on this project. With that, I request your approval to approve the agreement and to authorize the county manager designate to execute or approve any future funding amendments or subsequent agreements to this.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Archuleta? So I will move approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we are at item 12. Announcement of our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 26, 2023, here in the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. And I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.